Good morning. I would like to call the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners Meeting to Order. Commissioner White on the, I see Commissioner White is there. Commissioner White, you're recognized for the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll ask that if you're able to, to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation. You may have an image of the American flag. If not, if you're seeing an image of me, I have one in the background. So we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders as we make important decisions for this county this morning. I continue to pray for all of those who have been impacted by COVID-19 in various ways. And Lord, this morning, I would like to give thanks for all of these young people that will be recognized today, and they are certainly testament to the fact that this country will be in good hands as the next generation begins to take the reins. Father, I pray for our first responders and members of our armed forces. Pray that you will guide them and keep them safe each and every day. I give all of these thanks and ask for all of these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner White. We appreciate that. Roll call, please.
Miller?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Ken?
Here.
Merman?
Here.
Overman?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White?
Here.
You have a quorum, sir.
Thank you. Today is our pleasure to celebrate the accomplishment of six outstanding young people as we present the Board of County Commissioners Youth Excellence and Achievement Awards, also known as the YEA Awards. This is the 10th year for the program, which was created to recognize young people's positive contributions in areas like academics, community service, athletics, and the performing arts. We're presenting the YEA Awards virtually for the first time this year. The recipients have joined us for the virtual meeting, so we'll be able to see and hear from them as they accept their well-deserved honors. Our winners, all of our winners, will receive their medals in the mail, and I hope they proudly display them today. I look forward to this ceremony every year. It warms my heart and gives me great hope for the future to see how much these young people have accomplished in such a short time, but unfortunately, this will be my last one, but I'll be watching from afar. Before we introduce the honors, I want to recognize the members of the Hillsborough County Commission on the Status of Women. The Commission on the Status of Women does an outstanding job each year selecting the YEA Award winners. It is a challenge to pick six winners of all the nominees. We appreciate your service. Is Chairwoman Lee Laura with us today?
Yes, I am, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I would. We're so happy to be here for this awards presentation. I see that I'm joined by several of my fellow commissioners. So thank you, ladies, for making the time for this exciting morning. Thank you. And first, I want to thank the Board of County Commissioners for their support of the Commission on the Status of Women. Our role is to support women in our community by studying issues they face and making recommendations to the County Commission. In addition to the YEA Awards, we also celebrate women by holding our Women's Hall of Fame event every year, honoring outstanding women who have made a significant contribution to our community. I'm thrilled to be the chair of this exceptional group of women this year. Students, we are so proud of the accomplishments that led you to being honored with this award. Your perseverance is an inspiration, and your service to your community is amazing. We know you are going to go on to do great things. Although this past six months has no doubt challenged you even more, and was nothing any of us could ever have expected, I know you are up to that challenge, too. You will be the ones to make the difference, and we couldn't be more optimistic about the fact that you're going to be in charge in the future. It's particularly fitting that in this year that marks the anniversary of women finally getting the right to vote, all of our awards are going to inspiring young women. Fight for equality is far from over, but we know you're up to that challenge, too. Congratulations.
Okay. Thank you very much. Tell us a little bit about the award, and then recognize the first winner. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. All women, huh?
We'll have a conversation about that.
Good morning.
It wasn't on purpose.
That's why I wondered. That's interesting. Good morning. All of our six honorees have demonstrated a special drive, determination, and commitment to our community that are critical for our next generation of leaders. Too often, it's the worst examples of teen behavior that are displayed and sometimes get attention on the internet and the news, while so many young people who excel and do good and great deeds go unnoticed. We take a different approach here in Hillsborough County. The young people who devote themselves to the betterment of the community through strong leadership and determined action will shape our future. The board and the residents of Hillsborough County are committed to honoring and encouraging their efforts. So today, we celebrate the next generation with the YEA Awards. There are three categories, which I especially love: success despite difficult odds, leadership, and volunteer or community service. One award in each category goes to a high school student, and one award is presented to a middle school student. Before we proceed, I'd like to present a special video that perfectly captures the spirit of the YEA Awards and introduces some of the amazing young people who we have with us today. The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners Youth Excellence and Achievement Awards recognize positive contributions in areas including academics, athletics, community service, and performing arts. This year, six middle and high school students were honored for their acts of leadership, volunteerism, and success despite difficult odds.
My name is Gabriela Diaz Garcia. I'm 14 years old, and I go to Sickles High School. Some of those successes include getting one of the best awards for the ESOL program in my school because I came here not knowing any English. And that program really helped me a lot to get through the school year. I'm really, really proud and grateful, but I do know that I have a long way to go. This is not where I stop putting in effort.
My name is Nitya Ane. I'm going to 11th grade in King High School. This recognition is really nice, but like, it's more like spreading awareness that you can help your community. So like, they see me who like, got an award for helping these many people. And it's not necessarily the award, but it's like, how much like, impact you can make in your community, like, how many places you can reach. So it might like, motivate others to also start.
Hi, my name is Lucia Popovich. I'm 14 years old, and I go to SLAM Apollo. Outside of school, I am a Girl Scout, and I work or volunteer at the DFW. I also help at the church. When we help at the church, we help at the food bank. It brightens up my day, first off, so I can help others and people that can't really help themselves. It just brings me joy.
Hello, I'm Latatiana Beasley, and I'm 17 years old, and I'm a senior at Bloomingdale Senior High School. A leader is someone who is caring, intuitive, and dedicated in their pursuits. And I feel honored and privileged to represent my school as a leader.
My name is Tanaya Brooks. I'm 12 years old, and I go to Academy Prep's Camp of Tampa. I would encourage anyone my age to become leaders in their community or just to get involved, because we are the future adults, and we're the ones that's gonna have to make sure that this world is better, and it keeps being amazing, and we keep striving to make it better.
These individuals are all examples of how young people can dedicate themselves to improving their community and shaping its future. Congratulations to all the winners. That was truly, truly wonderful. We are in good hands for the future. All of you should be proud for everything you've done for the community. I'm now going to present the first award. The YEA Award recipients in the success despite difficult odds category have overcome tremendous personal obstacles to attain success and to have a positive impact on others. Is Gabriela Diaz Garcia on the call?
No.
There you are. Okay, good. Our first recipient is an excellent example of how determination and hope can help anyone achieve the American dream. A native of Cuba, Gabriela has faced numerous challenges in her life. In addition to undergoing two surgeries to repair congenital heart defect, she worked tirelessly to learn English when she and her family immigrated to the United States. Her determination to overcome these obstacles fueled her drive to succeed in a country that she loves. Throughout her academic career, Gabriela has mastered her English as a second language classes, as well as her standard courses, becoming one of the highest graded students at Horizon Charter School. This amazing 13-year-old has excelled in her curriculum and her Florida Standards Assessment exams, earning membership in the National Junior Honor Society. While taking both junior, high, and high school courses, she also plays on the volleyball team, proving that she's a winner in the classroom and in athletics. Gabriela, you've accomplished so much, and I'm happy things are going well for you and your family, and I'm thrilled to award you the Middle School YEA Award in the success despite difficult odds category. Congratulations. And here, I'm handing you the award. No, we'll have to get that to you later, but would you like to say a few words for us, please?
Yes, actually. Firstly, I want to thank the YEA Awards for giving me this opportunity, this chance to be here. Additionally, I want to thank my mentorship school and the teachers there, especially the ESOL program, for getting me started in their program and teaching me basically everything. I also want to thank Horizon Charter School teachers for also teaching me, encouraging me to try my best in all my classes. And lastly, but most important, of course, I want to thank my family for all their support and encouragement to keep trying my best and everything. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And Commissioner Smith, who I knew grew up in a Spanish-speaking Cuban family, she's also, her mother's Cuban. So would you present our next YEA Award?
There. Thank you very much. This is such a wonderful celebration. I'm so happy to be a part of it. Natalie Robles, who lives in Tampa, has faced one adversity after another, including leukemia, the death of her father, and an illness to her mom. But her can-do attitude and positive nature enabled her to earn straight A's her freshman year and graduate this spring from Tampa Catholic High School. Her academic excellence resulted in scholarship offers, and she is making a quick stop at Tallahassee Community College before heading down the street to attend Florida State University, where she intends to learn a law degree. Natalie truly is a well-rounded young lady. In addition to her academic achievements, she found passion in playing volleyball. This was after scoring her first goal in soccer and deciding to try a different sport. At age 15, she got her first job helping other young people at Camp Tampa. What's even better is that she has been in remission from leukemia since 2009. Natalie is an inspiration, not only to other young people, but to residents of all ages. In recognition of her hard work and strength, I am proud to present the YEA, present her with the YEA Award in the success despite difficult odds category for high school students. Natalie was unable to attend today's ceremony, but the board congratulates her, as do I, for her achievement, and we wish her the best in her endeavors. And from here, Commissioner Miller will present our next award.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. The YEA Award recipients in the leadership category demonstrate positive impact on others in an ongoing endeavor such as sports, academics, or the arts. Is Tanaya Brooks on the call? Is she here?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And I hope I pronounced your first name right. A true leader must demonstrate many qualities. These includes confidence, determination, and the ability to make decisions under pressure. Our next recipient is a true leader at her home and school. Her dedication to her family is true inspirational, truly inspirational. In addition to keeping her mother company during her evening college classes, Tanaya provides full-time care for her younger brother who's recovering from brain surgery. As a junior high student at the Academy Prep Center of Tampa Bay, she is a take-charged person in numerous activities, including playing lead characters in school theatrical productions. Most importantly, Tanaya's compassionate heart serves as a foundation for her talents as a leader, whether it is listening to her classmates and helping them with problems, or offering a shoulder to lean on during challenging times. Tanaya is a leader who cares for others. It is not surprising that she dreams of becoming a pediatrician or veterinarian when she grows up. If she does not become a vet, who knows? We may see her caring for her four-legged friends at the Pet Resource Center. For her empathy initiative, Tanaya is a middle school recipient for the YEA Award in the leadership category. Congratulations. And one day, she might be sitting here reading this for some other kid as a county commissioner. Congratulations, Tanaya. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes. First, I would like to thank God, because he gave me this opportunity to get this award. I would also like to thank my school, because they always encourage leadership and positive influences. And last, I would like to thank my family, because they've supported me throughout this whole entire time, and I just think, thank you.
Oh, yeah. She's a county commissioner one day. Watch out. Thank you, Tanaya. Congratulations again. Commissioner White will present the next YEA Award.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe I still have Latatiana Beasley on the call with me. Latatiana is a student at Bloomingdale High School and has achieved so much academically, professionally, and personally. In addition to serving as student government treasurer and committee representative of her school's Spirit Committee, she was committee chair and supervisor of Incredibles, Bloomingdale's Special Olympics event. As a member of the Beta Club, an honor society which focuses on leadership and academics, Latatiana served as its junior vice president and team captain for its Relay for Life charity drive. She has also served with distinction as the Student Government Association's Officer Supervisor for the high school's Metropolitan Ministries. Latatiana's amazing academic record matches her leadership efforts. She's ranked in the top 2% of her class and has completed honors, advanced placement, and dual enrollment courses. She will soon be earning the Seal of Biliteracy and is pursuing an AP Capstone diploma. These are incredible accomplishments, and it is no surprise that Latatiana Beasley was chosen as the high school recipient of the YEA Award in the leadership category. Latatiana, congratulations, and I'd like to invite you to say a few words at this time.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I would like to thank the Commissioners, I mean, the Commission on the Status of Women and the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners for the honor of being selected as the recipient of the YEA Award for Leadership. My deepest appreciation goes to my college and career counselor, Ms. Edgman, for nominating me for this award. And I shall remain forever grateful for the recognition that I received. Thank you. Oh, I also want to thank my, my school, Bloomingdale, my Student Government Association sponsor, Ms. Johnson, and, and student government for encouraging me to be a leader inside my school and within my community. Thank you.
Thank you. Latatiana, you have made us proud, and I can see that you have a bright future ahead of you. And I will hand it over. Thank you. I will hand it over to Commissioner Merman to present our next award.
Thank you, Commissioner White. And is Lucia Popovich on?
Yes.
Lucia? There you are. Good. Glad you could join us.
Lucia, unmute yourself. There you go.
There you are. The YEA Award recipients in the volunteer or community service category give their time to make life better for others. This describes Lucia Popovich to a T. And we're so glad you could join us this morning, Lucia, for this great award that you're gonna get. Good morning. She is a resident of Ruskin. She, Lucia, recently finished eighth grade at SLAM Academy of Apollo Beach. SLAM stands for Sports, Leadership, Arts, and Management. Lucia is a pillar at school and in the community. She's always striving to give back to others. She is an active and enthusiastic member of the Community Service Club at school and outside the classroom. She serves in the community as a Girl Scout and volunteers to assist military veterans and helps feed the hungry at a local food bank in Ruskin. She is a forward thinker. Lucia is always looking for new ways to help others who are younger and less fortunate. She is excited about the new journey that awaits her at Leonard High School and is already thinking ahead to college. She plans to pursue the collegiate program at Leonard and hopes, hopes to attend the University of Tampa to major in criminology and criminal justice. She believes that career path will enable her to help the less fortunate in an even more impactful way. Lucia's drive and desire to improve the lives of others make her this year's YEA Award winner in the middle school volunteer or community service category. And I just want to say, great job, Lucia. Giving back to your community is one of the most important things, and I can tell you're gonna be, if you go into criminal justice, we could see you as sheriff of Hillsborough County. So just want to wish you congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I would. I would like to thank everyone here for choosing me for the Volunteer Youth Achievement Award. I am very honored to be receiving this award. My first year at SLAM has been an amazing year, and I am very grateful for that they gave me the opportunity to volunteer in and out of school. In my first year, I was picked to speak at my school's dedication, which was an honor to be chosen. This award just helps me fuel my passion to give back to my community. I want to continue to volunteer to be a role model to my peers at SLAM Apollo, and thank you, thank you once again for the consideration, and I'm overjoyed to be receiving this award.
You're very deserving. Thank you, and thanks for joining us today. And I think Commissioner, is Commissioner Smith gonna do Commissioner Overman's award? Commissioner Miller?
Yes, she will. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. Yes. Commissioner Overman is having technical difficulties, so I'll be helping her out by introducing the next award recipient. But I, I do want to say, Lucia, I also live in Ruskin, and I went to the University of Tampa, so I hope to run into you someday and meet you on your path.
Same here.
But at this time, I'm going to recognize Nitya Ane, and I see that Nitya Ane is on the call. Hi, Nitya. Welcome. Nitya, who lives in Tampa, is just starting her junior year at See Leon King High School, but already has made a lot, made life better for countless individuals in the community. Compassionate and sensitive, she saw the homeless struggle to obtain food and other basic necessities when she donated food to a local ministry four years ago. It was a life-changing moment, and she made it her personal cause to help the homeless. She raised money by selling Indian food at events. From the money she earned and her birthday gifts, she bought clothes, toiletries, blankets, food, and other items, and donated them to the homeless. We got a glimpse of some of that in the video that we just saw before this ceremony. Last summer, while volunteering at the James A. Haley Veterans Hospital in Tampa, she learned about the sacrifices made by veterans, and that prompted her to raise money over the Thanksgiving break so she could buy them gifts for the holidays. At King High, Nitya is a member of the Key Club and volunteers with Habitat for Humanity. Further, as a member of Relay for Life, she raised $400 for cancer research. When Nitya grows up, she wants to be a genetic research doctor. For these and other accomplishments, Nitya is the YEA Award high school recipient in the volunteer or community service category. Congratulations, and thank you for all you do to help the less fortunate in our community. Nitya, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, thank you so much. First, I would like, like to thank the committee for selecting me for this award and all the opportunities I had to help the people in my community. Next, I would like to thank my family, especially my mom, who like, pushed me and encouraged me to help people. And I would like the Thorn Ministries, which was the first event I went to to help the homeless, because it really opened my eyes to like, helping the homeless people and seeing the joy it gave me to like, see them fed, have like, necessity that we all have. And it made me want to continue with my volunteering. Then I would also like to thank the VA for selecting me for the volunteer program, because it really allowed me to like, reach out for these veterans who provided to our country, and it like, helped me give them like, my time and effort to like, show them that we care about them. And it really like, opened my eyes to these possibilities. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being with us today. You're an inspiration to our community, and thanks for all you do for all of us. I was especially inspired by your perspective that you shared on the video preceding this, that, you know, we can each be an example in our service to others. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner, remember, it's up to you.
Let me say congratulations to all the young leaders and, and all the things that you're doing. We're looking very forward to you all becoming our leaders, just like Commissioner White said in the, in the prayer, to take over the reins of this county and this state and this country as we move on and you all take over as our leaders. Let me say, Nitya, you hit two targets there with me. One, I'm a veteran, and two, I'm a cancer survivor. And you raised money for cancer research for Relay of Life, so thank you so very much. On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, I want to thank you all, that of all that you do, and all that you will continue to do to make Hillsborough County a better place for all of us to live, work, and play. Each of you is a point of pride in our community. We look forward to the good works you will accomplish as you grow into adulthood. Thank you again. And this concludes our Hillsborough County 2020 YEA Awards presentations. We wish the very best to each and every one of you. God bless. Yes. Commissioner Merman will now present today's only proclamation. Commissioner Merman, you're recognized.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Is Coordinator Michelle Sterling on the, on the line? I think she was.
Yes. Yes, good morning.
Great. Good to have you with us today. Coordinator Michelle Sterling is from Safe Kids Greater Tampa, and that is part of St. Joseph's Children's Hospital. And every year, the Board of County Commissioners recognizes September as Child Passenger Safety Awareness Month, because it's so important for people to never leave their children alone in their cars, especially during a hot day. Safe Kids Greater Tampa, which is led by St. Joseph's Children's Hospital, has been so instrumental in raising awareness on how to keep children safe from heat-related injuries and possibly even fatalities. It's my honor to present this proclamation to Ms. Sterling that I will now read into the record. It reads, whereas it only takes a few minutes for the interior of a car to heat up and become deadly to a child inside, whereas every 10 days in the United States, a child dies from being left in a hot car. Whereas according to kidsandcars.org, over 900 children nationwide have died after being left in hot cars since 1990, making heat stroke the leading cause of non-crash vehicle-related deaths for children. Whereas in 2019, 52 children left in vehicles died from heat stroke. Whereas it is important for parents and caregivers to never leave a child alone in a car, and if anyone sees a child alone in a car, they should call 911 immediately. Whereas Safe Kids Worldwide is a national network of over 600 coalitions and chapters that work every day to help parents and caregivers prevent unnecessary childhood injuries and fatalities. And whereas Safe Kids coalitions join with firefighters, first responders, medical professionals, children's hospitals, pediatricians, police officers, other committed residents to prevent child heat stroke. So now therefore, be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare September 2020 as Florida, does hereby declare September 2020 as Child Passenger Safety Awareness Month and Hillsborough County encourages all residents to support Safe Kids Greater Tampa, which is led by St. Joseph's Children's Hospital, in preventing heat stroke and dedicate themselves to keeping children safe. And this is executed the second day of September 2020, signed by all 70, all 70 commissioners, no, we only have seven, seven commissioners. So I'm just so glad I could present this proclamation to you today. This is such an important, I know when we read it in the news, it is just, it's heartbreaking to see that a child would suffer even a possible fatality from being left in a car, and sometimes very unintentionally by the parents. So with that, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. Public education and awareness remain the most effective tool to help get this word out, to help prevent heat stroke. So we thank you from St. Joseph's Children's Hospital and also from Safe Kids Greater Tampa for your continued support with helping us raise awareness. There are some simple steps that parents can take that we want to make sure that they are always checking the backseat of their vehicle, no matter where they are. Heat stroke and children being left in cars, it's not irrespective of persons, it's not income level, it's not where you live, what you do for your job, it can happen to anybody. So we like to make sure that we raise awareness. So far in 2020, we've had 20 hot car deaths within our nation. So we want to make sure that people are still reminded that it's still taking place, to make sure they're checking the backseat of their vehicles, and keeping your doors locked when you're not in your vehicle, that's when a lot of children enter the cars. They might happen to walk outside in the garage and begin to get inside the vehicle, and then they can't get out. So we want to make sure that that continued awareness is out there, and we thank you so much for your support with that.
Absolutely. Thank you, and hopefully through this proclamation, we will help you spread the word. Thank you so much for joining us today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Before we move into approval to change the agenda, I'm going to take a point of personal privilege at this point. So please, please bear with me and listen to what I have to say. After I finish this, I know I'm going to probably get some hate emails, as I have in the past, but that's okay. You can go ahead and send them. Now, I'll be praying for you, and I'll continue to work for you in this county to make your life a better place for all of us to live, work, and play. But this county and this state and this country is on the verge of some very, very serious racial divide, if we're not already there. Systemic racism has occurred in this country over the years, but we have gone back 75 years in racism in this country, to the point that it has gotten ugly. It has divided us as a country, and that's not where we should be. We should not be there. I've talked about what I've seen in my life, growing up in the South or growing up in Tampa in the 50s. And you all know that I talk about facing racism eyeball to eyeball. And with some of the emails I've gotten this year in 2020, it's quite evident that it's still there. But we have got to make a difference. We must make a difference. This board can make a difference in this county, and maybe send a message to other counties and other parts of the state, other parts of this country, in trying to work to bring some harmony to everyone, regardless of our race, regardless of our sexual orientation, regardless of our income, regardless of our political ideologies, our political differences, whatever the case may be. We have got to work to make a difference. John Lewis said that if you see something, do something and say something. He also said there's nothing wrong with good trouble. The demonstrations we see out there, the peaceful demonstrations, are good trouble. And I'm not talking about the ones where there's burning of buildings or looting, or the killing of innocent people because they're different color from you, or all those things that you see out there. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the peaceful demonstrations to do away with systemic racism in this country. I was around when the demonstrations were occurring in 1950s, 1960s. The peaceful demonstration was led by John Lewis and Martin Luther King and all the gentlemen that, and the ladies that were out there trying to make a difference, even during the time we're trying to get the right to vote. The makeup of the peaceful demonstrations we have today are completely different. The cause is the same, but those that are demonstrating are different, because you see more people of, not of color, you see more people of different races, you see more people of different sexual orientations out there, because the mere fact is that they want to make a difference in this country and put the systemic racism aside. We have got to make a difference as elected officials in this county. Now, I'll be leaving you November 16th, that's my last day. But I'm going to be working with our staff before I leave here to bring something to this commission, that we can put something out there that, that will make a difference in this county. And it's not about an apology, anything like that. It's about education, it's about finding people jobs, it's about healthcare, it's about many things. And like I said before, we, we must do something. We've got to do something. We cannot sit back on our hands and not do a doggone thing. So I am asking and begging you, for the 70-some odd days I have left, I'm going to be putting something, I said, working with staff, try to put something in place. But please, please, with every ounce of strength and vigor that you have, try to make a difference in this country, try to make a difference in the state, try to make a difference in this county, and let's put this systemic racism aside. We cannot have a divided country that will tear this country apart. I did not serve three years, 11 months, and 28 days in the United States Air Force to see this happen. I did not. So I beg of you, let's do something. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you for your words, yes. I have great respect actually for people that are hitting the streets with good trouble and, and peaceful demonstrations that are bringing attention to the decades and decades, I mean, since the founding of the nation, of course, but the systemic racism that's, that's still there, the issues that we still have. So thank you for those words, and I will support you in, I'm sure, in whatever it is that, that you bring forward, and I think we'll be seeing in this county a lot of change and attention and focus on those issues. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Wise, change to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, Commissioners. We have one item that is for deferral, item 19, which is the agreement with the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay. That item will be deferred to September 16th. We have one, two correction to the agenda, item B2. This is an agreement with Tampa Bay Arena LLC. We previously said, it was with Tampa Bay Sports and Entertainment, TBSE, but now ever, all the documents will be changed to Tampa Bay Arena, TBA. This is for an agreement to undertake up to $2,410,773 for COVID-19 mitigation-related expenditures for Amelie Arena, which the county owns. We have six public hearings at 10:00 AM, items D1, D2, D3, D4, D5, D6. These are all the first of two required public hearings to enter into a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement, with the second public hearing being held on September 8th. Those are for Catalantic Group, Inc., Hillsborough 301 LLC, Road Development LLC, Creek Preserve Development LLC, Eisenhower Property Group LLC, and June FB Debt LLC. Item D7, at 10:00 AM, is to conduct the first public hearing for the designation of a brownfield, sorry, brownfield area at various parcels in the city of Tampa. The second public hearing will be scheduled for September 16th. Item D8 is a public hearing, also the first, for brownfield area property on Dover Street in the city of Tampa, designate, designating a brownfield area. That second public hearing is also scheduled for September 16th. At 10:00 AM, item D9 is to conduct a public hearing and improve the final assessment resolution and assessment role to create water and wastewater impact fee assessments. And then to item 1015, Commissioner Miller's item, item F2, is to receive a report and update on the 2020 census for Marilyn Stevens, who is the Assistant Regional Census Manager for the region. Mr. Chairman, those are the changes to the agenda.
Move the changes.
Motion back Commissioner Merman, second back Commissioner Kemp to approve the changes to the agenda, seeing no hands for discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you. We're now moving to public comment. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the Board members. However, it is requested at the same time when you address the Board that comments are not directed personally against a Commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides a mutual respect between the Board members and the public. The Board has set aside a 45-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comment. At the discretion of the Chair, the Board may again hear public comments at the end of the meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak during this meeting will be able to do so by completing the online public comment form found at hillsboroughcounty.org/speakup. You will be required to provide your name and telephone number on the, on the line, on the online form. This information is being requested to facilitate the audio conferencing process. The Chair will call on all speakers by name and in order in which they have completed the online public comment form. Prioritization is on first come, first served basis. An audio call-in number will be provided to participants that have completed the form after it is received by the county. All callers will be muted upon calling and will be unmuted in the submission order after being recognized by the Chair by name. The three minutes are allowed for each speaker. Citizens speaking on scheduled agenda items will be heard before citizens speaking on non-scheduled agenda items. So our first speaker, I think we only have one speaker that's signed up this morning, if I'm not mistaken, for a public comment, and that is Charles Sand.
Yes, sir, Chairman. Can I speak now?
Yes, sir. Good morning. You recognize?
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. I'm, as was said, I think a lot of you know, probably maybe know me from the past or current things I've done, but I'm Dr. Charlie Sand. I'm an emergency physician over at St. Joe's Hospital, Maine, and I've been very involved with this county for many years. Just a few highlights, I've chaired, I've been on the EMPC, Emergency Medical Planning Council, since 1994, I've been a voting member. I have chaired this group since 2014 or 2015. I think everyone knows, but for those who don't, EMPC represents all hospitals, EMS, law enforcement, emergency preparedness, trauma cardiac, stroke, pediatrics, and many other entities that are involved with acute care in our great county of Hillsborough County. So it's certainly a privilege and an honor to speak. I've met a number of times the Borneo County Commissioner members, including some of you on many issues in the past, including cardiac and stroke, which is really, literally, no pun intended, near and dear to my heart, because I was on the Florida American Heart Association Board of Directors for six years in the early 2000s. I was president of Florida American Heart in 2005. We've done great things in this county, including AED efforts, where we put over 1,000 AEDs in this county, non-EMS, and not to pick on names, but Ms. Garcis was certainly part of that in the early 2000s, when we had that AED committee. I'm not sure what her role was at the time, but she contributed greatly, and we put over 1,000 AEDs in the county, again, non-EMS. Been involved with multiple stroke efforts, both legislatively statewide and locally. I medically direct, sorry I'm taking so long, but just to give you a little background on what I do in this county, I medically direct the HCC, Hillsborough Community College EMS Training Program since 1994. I'm now their COVID advisor. Commissioner Merman has been good enough to be a liaison and comes to our advisory meetings, which we appreciate all of her help. I medically direct four helicopters in the area, I've been involved with disaster emergency preparedness, both at the county level, St. Joe's and daycare level. So giving you an idea of some of the things I've done. So what's happened, and we'll get to the agenda item for public speaking. Our EMS and hospitals do a wonderful job treating our patients. I think we give cutting-edge emergency care and patient care in this county. Superb collaboration between EMS hospitals, all of you on the Board of County Commissioners having to do with transport and treatment of our acute patients, but like everything, it's not without challenges and barriers. And one particular area that's been a long-term thorn, for lack of better words, is our EMS hospital bypass diversion issue, where we will, EMS agencies, which we have multiple great agencies in this county, will arrive at hospitals, hospitals are over surge capacity, they don't have room for these patients, and unfortunately, not infrequently, they wait out on the ambulance ramp where they need to get into the emergency department to get more acute care. Only so much can be done pre-hospital. You need to get into the hospital to get treatment. Is that my time, or can?
Yes, sir. Doctor Sand, your three minutes, your three minutes are up. I'm sorry, but we have a lot of three minutes, and your three minutes are up. I wish you have some more time, but your three minutes up. Thank you very much for, for your presentation. Thank you. That was the last only speaker we have for public comment, Mr. Brewer, Mr. McElroy?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Commissioner Merman.
That's a motion back to Commissioner Merman, second back to Commissioner White to approve the consent agenda, seeing no hands for discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Ms. Wise?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have some time before 10 o'clock, so we can go to the regular agenda. We have John Muller here to present item B1, which is an approval for agreements with nonprofit community venues using the CARES dollars.
Good morning, Commissioner. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. John Muller, Director, Facility Management Services, Hillsborough County. Agenda item B1 is a request for your approval of a nonprofit community venue program, which will reimburse qualified facility-related equipment, supplies, and modification expenses from the period of March 1st through December 30th. The program assists these nonprofits in their phased reopening plans. There are two categories within this program. The first is the eight nonprofit venues, which can be categorized as cultural attractions that support tourism. These are each eligible for up to $500,000 reimbursement. The second, more broader group, is nonprofit venues who provide onsite youth programming, which is open to the public. These nonprofits would be eligible for up to $250,000 per site. The focus of these three reimbursements is to support their phased reopening plans and protect staff and guests by assisting them with implementing Department of Health and best practices for hygiene and PPE, disinfection, sanitation, and physical mitigations or modifications which will support social distancing. Staff has coordinated with the eight tourist venue for an initial assessment. Collectively, there is at least $2.5 to $3 million of improvements either spent or planned to be spent to date with this funding. And this funding would support them in those initiatives and potentially others. For the youth programming nonprofits, our plan would be to start with a pilot group, who have already requested assistance, and ramp up to a full program in the next three to four weeks. I will mention that one of the intangible benefits of this program is the collection and sharing of solutions between the nonprofits. All of these facilities are overcoming their individual unique challenges to provide guest services, employ staff, all within, working within a safe COVID-19 framework. As the county receives information on measures taken, that information can be shared with Department of Health and other nonprofits, as they may be preparing their own plans and measures. All funding for this program will utilize CARES Act Section 601D funds. I'll stop there. I'll stop there and take your questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. I see no hands at this particular point in time. Motion by Commissioner Murman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kemp to approve item B1. Commissioner Smith, you recognize? Commissioner Smith, you gotta unmute yourself.
Sorry. I'm really glad to see that the funding that we are giving comes with the requirement that the recipients will provide a plan and that the plan must be aligned with CDC guidelines and state and county recommendations and best practices to reduce the transmission risk of COVID-19 for these kinds of spaces and gatherings, and it's important to ensure that any organizations and venues receiving our funds to help them stay safe are actually abiding by the ordinances and guidelines that keep people safe. And so I just want to alert the public that these funds go along with that criteria and that will, our county will be making sure that these organizations will be staying safe as we help them to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just want to say thank you to staff. They have been working so hard on this. Ron Burton, John Muller, Lindsay Kimball, all the whole crew has just worked tirelessly to help these nonprofits because I got to tell you guys, it's rough out there. Tendons at these venues is, some of them still don't have a major part of their business open, and so I think it just, this is going to go a long way to help them and bridge the gap, so at least they can stay functioning until we get back to normal, whenever that would be, of course. I just want to thank staff. Did a great job.
Commissioner Smith, do you have something else you want to say?
No.
Okay. All right. I saw your hand, that's why I asked that question. We have a motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Kemp to approve item B1. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll on a vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Murman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Ms. Wise?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is item B2. John Muller will present this item too. This is an agreement with the Tampa Bay Arena LLC and the Tampa Sports Authority for improvements to Amalie Arena.
Good morning again, Commissioners. John Muller, Director of Facility Management Services, Hillsborough County. Agenda item B2 is a request for your approval to reimburse Tampa Bay Arena up to a maximum amount of $2,410,773 for the approximately 20,000 square foot Amalie Arena. Hillsborough County owns the arena. Over the past several weeks, Tampa Bay Arena, along with Tampa Sports Authority and county staff, have reviewed initial opening plans and the necessary facility modification supplies and purchases that will support with and align with a safe phased reopening plan. Each modification is reviewed and assessed with EDC guidance and staff consults with Department of Health to ensure it provides guests and staff, to, excuse me, to ensure it supports reducing the risk transmission of COVID-19. The reimbursement items are intended to provide guest and staff protection from arrival through departure. As examples, these measure, measures include additional HVAC disinfection, queue line separation, barriers, timed entry, reducing lines through prepaid, et cetera. In a typical year, Tampa Bay Arena would host 130 to 150 events, entertain 2 million visitors, and provide 1,600 event staff positions. These measures will allow the arena to safely reopen with reduced capacity and gradually bring this positive economic impact back in a measured, controlled manner in which guest confidence is established. TBA continues to work with county staff to ensure CDC guidelines will be followed and that each phase plans are reviewed with the county and Department of Health. All funding for this program will utilize CARES Act Section 601D funds. And as Ms. Wise mentioned, you did receive a pink slip on this item, which was a correction to the entity name. I'll stop there for your questions, and I'll mention that Eric Hart from TSA is also on this call.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Move approval.
I heard Commissioner Murman and second by Commissioner Kemp to approve item B2. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Murman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
No.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner White voted no.
Ms. Wise?
The next item is item B3. This is an agreement for, also for improvements for COVID-related matters with the New York Yankees partnership, and John Muller will present that item as well.
Good morning for third-time Commissioners. John Muller, Director of Facility Management Services, Hillsborough County. Agenda item B3 is a request for your approval to reimburse the New York Yankee partnership up to a maximum amount of $1,693,159 for the approximately 11,000-seat George M. Steinbrenner Field. Hillsborough County owns GMS Field, which the Yankees have used since 1996 for spring training, Class 8 baseball, and special events. Over the past several weeks, GMS Field staff, along with Tampa Sports Authority and county staff, have reviewed initial reopening plans and assessed the necessary facility modification supplies and purchases that will support with and align with a safe phased reopening plan. Those modifications are reviewed with the Department of Health's resource staff to ensure it does support reducing the risk of transmission of COVID-19. As examples, the funding will provide resources for improved HVAC disinfection, entry screening, eliminating gate choke points to promote social distancing in lines, ensure restrooms and concession experiences are touchless, et cetera. In a typical year, GMS Field will host over 100 events. The Yankees employ 200-plus full-time staff in Tampa, and during the peak of their season, over 250-plus event staff positions to support events. Spring game, spring training games alone usually draw over 100,000 fans, of which approximately 50%, 56% are from out of the area. These measures will allow GMS Field to safely reopen, initially with reduced capacity, and provide a safe environment for the returning fans and staff. The Yankees continue to work with the county staff to ensure CDC guidelines will be followed and ensure that at each phase plans are reviewed with the county and Department of Health. Commissioners, you did receive a pink slip on this agenda item, which was a clarification the Yankees partnership requested regarding the completion of the project in distinct component or measures. All funding for this program will utilize CARES Act Section 601D funds. I'll stop there, entertain your questions, and again, Mr. Hart from TSA is also on the call.
I see no questions. Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Kemp to approve item B3. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Murman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
No.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner White voted no.
Ms. Wise?
Thank you, John. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's almost 10 o'clock.
We can go to D1. By the time you, we've been talking, you know, we can, we can make sure that, we make sure that it comes at 10 o'clock. I'm sitting here looking at the clock at this particular point in time, just hold up one second. I will keep talking as we move along. Good to see everyone this morning and things are going well so far. Hope you're staying safe. I have 10 o'clock.
That was a long minute.
Then it'll give me an opportunity to introduce Adam Gormley, who is going to lead us through these public hearings. This is the first of two required public hearings. Okay, I think we did it. It is now 10 o'clock. Adam, we turned it over, item D1, to you to present this, these items. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Gormley, Development Services Department. Items D1 through D6 will all be public hearings that relate to proportionate share development agreements to satisfy school concurrency. The common element amongst all six of these is these are agreements by which a developer that has, is creating new school impacts that can't be currently accommodated by school facilities is agreeing with the school district to make a payment proportionate to their impact on the deficient, on the school deficiencies that will then be applied to make additional capacity improvements that will accommodate the, the excess students generated by the project. With that general intro, item D1 is a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation agreement among Hillsborough County, the School Board of Hillsborough County, and CalAtlantic Group Inc. The purpose of the agreement is to, is for the proposed LICE Phase 3 subdivision to satisfy school concurrency by the payment of a proportionate share in the amount of $249,659, and this will be to create one elementary school seat and eight middle school seats for a 84-unit single-family residential subdivision. The second public hearing will be held September 8th at 9:00 a.m. and available for any questions. This is a public hearing.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. I didn't deceive anyone that was wishing to speak on item D1, so therefore I want to close the public hearing. Are there any comments on D1?
Move approval.
No, we don't vote on these, ma'am. We're gonna, this is the first of two public hearing. Commissioner Smith, you recognize? Now unmute yourself, Commissioner Smith.
Dang, I can't get in the habit of that. Thank you. I'm, I'll be supporting these when they come back to us, but after the new year, maybe, I think we, we do need a meeting between the county commission and the school board to go through these processes. This prop share agreement seems overly complicated, for one thing, with the two hearings required since they're being handled as a development agreement, and I think it would benefit everyone. I mean, I, I think everyone would agree, it would be a good idea to look at streamlining this process, at least at our end, since the agreements are really hammered out between the school district and the developers. I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Smith. I actually had a meeting with staff that went on for an hour, as Mr. Gormley well knows, but it hasn't been my first one to try to kind of understand this process, and I agree with you completely. I think it's time now, and we are, in my first two years on the commission, we didn't have any of these, and then they kind of sprinkled in, and all of a sudden I saw all of these, and so I was very alarmed and concerned. So I do think we need to, you know, sometime in the new year, have a, a forward-looking conversation about how we move forward with this and, and how, how we can best plan for the future of the schools in our county. Thank you.
Okay. The second public hearing will be held on September 8th. Ms. Wise? Do you want to say anything? Mr. Gormley?
Yes. Commissioners.
No, it's D2.
Okay.
Commissioners, item D2 is a proposed school concurrency proportionate share mitigation agreement among Hillsborough County, the School Board of Hillsborough County, and Hillsborough 301 LLC. The purpose of this agreement is to satisfy school concurrency by the payment of a proportionate share payment in the amount of $223,100 to provide eight middle school seats for a 160-unit single-family residential subdivision. Second public hearing will be held September 8th at 9:00 a.m.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. I did not have anyone sign up for D2, so therefore we close the public hearing. Any, any discussion on item D2? Seeing no discussion, the second public hearing will be held September 8th, 2020. Ms. Wise?
Item G3. Adam Gormley will do this one as well.
Thank you. Item D3 is a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation agreement between Hillsborough County, the School Board of Hillsborough County, and Brodin Development LLC. Purpose of the agreement is to provide for satisfaction of school concurrency for the proposed Belmont Reserve subdivision by the payment in the amount of $1,317,355. The payment will go to construct 16 of, 16 elementary school student stations and 32 middle school student stations for a 361-unit single-family detached subdivision. Second public hearing will be held September 8th at 9:00 a.m. Available for any questions.
This is the first of two public hearings. We have two people that have signed up. They weren't, they didn't highlight it, but I see two people signed to speak on this one. Each speaker has three minutes. Jake Kramer?
Commissioner Miller, this is Jake Kramer representing the applicant on this project, and the next two, I just want to let you know, I'm here if anyone has questions, and I don't get to say this often, but I'm in complete agreement with Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Kemp on this issue, and we'd be happy to work with staff and them as well to try to find ways to simplify the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kevin Reilly.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Reilly, I'm appearing with Jake Kramer, just answer any questions. More of the numbers geek on this, so if there are none, I'm just happy to stand by.
Thank you. This closes the public hearing. Any comments? Seeing none, the next public hearing will be held, the second public hearing will be held on September 8th, 2020. Ms. Wise?
Next item is item G4. Adam Gormley will present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Gormley, Development Services Department. Item D4 is a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement amongst Hillsborough County, the School Board of Hillsborough County, and Creek Preserve Development LLC. The purpose of the agreement is to provide for satisfaction of school concurrency for the proposed Creek Preserve Phase 9 subdivision by payment of a proportionate share payment in the amount of $324,027 to go for the construction of eight elementary school student stations and four middle school student stations for a 300, sorry, 38-unit single-family detached subdivision. Second public hearing will be held September 8th at 9:00 a.m. and available for any questions.
This is the first of two public hearings. We have two people signed up to speak on D4. Mr. Kramer?
Mr. Chairman, I yield my time. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Reilly?
Mr. Chairman, I also yield my time.
Smart move by both of you. I'll then close the public hearing. The next public hearing will be held on September 8th, 2020. Ms. Wise?
Item D5. Adam Gormley.
Mr. Gormley?
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Gormley, Development Services Department. Item D5 is a proportionate share school mitigation development agreement amongst Hillsborough County, the School Board of Hillsborough County, and the Eisenhower Property Group LLC. The purpose of the agreement is to satisfy school concurrency for the proposed South Creek Phase 2A, 2B, and 2C subdivision by the payment of proportionate share payment in the amount of $330,666. Will go to the construction of three elementary school student stations and nine middle school student stations for a proposed subdivision consisting of 117 single-family detached units and 30 single-family attached units. Second public hearing will be held September 8th at 9:00 a.m. and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gormley. This is a public hearing. We have two people signed up. Mr. Kramer?
Mr. Chairman, I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reilly.
Mr. Chairman, I yield my time.
Good, another smart moves again. This discussion, seeing no discussion, the second public hearing will be held on September 8th, 2020. Ms. Wise?
And the final hearing of this nature, Adam Gormley, item D6.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Gormley, Development Services Department. Item D6 is a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement amongst Hillsborough County, the School Board of Hillsborough County, and Dune FB LLC. The purpose of the agreement is to satisfy school concurrency for the South Shore Bay, formerly known as Forest Brook subdivision, by payment of a proportionate share payment in the amount of $808,723 to go to the construction- of $808,723 to go to the construction of 29 middle school student stations for a subdivision consisting of 203 single-family detached units, 234 single-family attached units. The second public hearing will be held, held September 8th at 10:00 a.m. and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gormley. This is the first of two public hearings. We have no one signed to speak on D6. That closes the public hearing. Any comments? Seeing none, the second public hearing will be held September 8th, 2020. Ms. Wise?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next public hearing is for Brownfield area, and Yaksha Petrovic is here to present this item, D7, as well as D8.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yaksha Petrovic, Economic Development Department. This is a first public hearing for the designation of a Brownfield area located at Parcels 2625 South 90th Street, 2124 South 86th Street, 9333 Suarez Road, and 2633 South 90th Street in Tampa. There is no BOCC action required today, and a second public hearing to consider a resolution designating the Brownfield area is set for September 16th. On January 24, 2020, the property owner, Colonnade Crosstown LLC, submitted an application requesting that Hillsborough County designate the parcels located at 2625 South 90th Street, 2124 South 86th Street, 9333 Suarez Road, and 2633 South 90th Street in Tampa as a Brownfield area. The property consists of approximately 158 acres and is shown on the projected map. Not should be up, I hope.
Not yet. There we go.
Brownfield area is a real property, the expansion, redevelopment, or reuse of which may be complicated by actual or perceived environmental contamination. On March 10, 2020, the BOCC approved the rezoning of the subject property from agricultural rural, agricultural, single-family, and planned development to a planned development. The approved planned development rezoning would allow for 1.87, 1.87 million square foot mixed-use project consisting of manufacturing, processing, distribution, commercial office, and hotel uses. The property currently consists of vacant residential pasture and mixed use, mixed auto use. The property does, designated as a competitive site 300 by Economic Development Department. And Colonnade Crosstown LLC anticipates creating at least 182 new permanent jobs at this location. The designation provides certain potential benefits to the developer associated with cleanup of this site. There is no financial impact to the county associated with this designation. An advertised community meeting on this designation was held virtually on August 19th. At the community meeting, no citizens attended, and no comments were received, along with applicants representative available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, sir. This is the first of two public hearings. We had four people to sign up to speak on this. I don't know if all four have joined in. Jeffrey Collier?
Good morning, Commissioner Miller. Jeff Collier, Sterns, Weber, Miller, on behalf of the applicant. We do have the project team online in case there are any questions.
Okay. Next speaker is David Smith.
Commissioner David Smith, I'm also with the project team, just here to answer questions.
Okay, thank you, sir. Dale Merriman?
Yes, Commissioner. Dale Merriman, I'm here also to be available to address any environmental questions.
Thank you, sir. Joe Carroll? Joe Carroll?
I'm here also to answer any questions, representing the applicant itself, as Director of Colonnade Crosstown.
Okay, thank you. That closes the public hearing. Any comments from the Commissioners? Seeing none, the second public hearing is scheduled for September 16th, 2020, at 10:00 a.m. D8?
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item D8. Yaksha is going to handle this Brownfield as well.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yaksha Petrovic, Economic Development Department. This is a first public hearing for designation of a Brownfield area at a parcel located at 5003 Dover Street in Tampa. There is no BOCC action required today, and a second public hearing to consider a resolution designating the Brownfield area is set for September 16th, 2020. On March 14, 2020, the property owner, American Roman numeral 17 LLC, submitted an application requesting that Hillsborough County designate the parcel located at 5003 Dover Street in Tampa as a Brownfield area. Property consists of approximately 11.47 acres and is shown on the projected map. Brownfield area is a real property, the expansion, redevelopment, or reuse of which may be complicated by actual perceived environmental contamination. The applicant plans to build a vehicle recycling, vehicle parts sales, and a Class 3 materials recycling facility and transfer station at the site. The designation provides certain potential benefits to the developer associated with cleanup of the site. There is no financial impact to the county associated with this designation. An advertised community meeting on this designation was held virtually on August 20th. At the community, at the community meeting, no citizens attended, and no comments were received, along with applicants representative available to answer any questions.
Okay, this is the first of two public hearings. We had no one sign up for D8, so that closes the public hearing. Any comments from Commissioners? Seeing none, the next public hearing, second public hearing will be held on September 16th, 2020, at 10:00 a.m. Ms. Wise?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Yaksha. And we barely recognized you there. Good to see you. All right, next public hearing is for, to conduct a public hearing to approve the final assessment resolution, an assessment role to create water and wastewater impact fee assessment unit, and that's Chanel is here to present that item.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Very good. That's Chanel, Director of Water Resources Department. Item D9 is a public hearing to approve the final assessment resolution and assessment role to create water and wastewater impact fee assessment unit 20301. The assessment program allows property owners to pay remaining water and wastewater impact fees over a 20-year period of time. We estimate that the county will collect $6,132,942.40 over the 20-year period from assessments associated with the properties in each unit. The collection from the assessments is included in the department's fiscal year 21 approved budget. This is the last final impact fee assessment unit resolution for the 2020 calendar year. This is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing, and we had no one sign up to speak on this D9, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. I'm glad to see that this is the last batch of these we have to consider this year. I've made my opposition to this program clear before, and I won't be supporting this batch of tax assessments today. I will point out that this batch is particularly troublesome because it includes 886 houses outside the urban service area in the RP2 and WVR2 areas. One of the conditions for development outside the urban service area in RP2 and WVR2 at suburban densities is that the developers are supposed to pay for the extension of urban services outside the urban service area. This is not supposed to cost the taxpayers. But this program, and this batch, passes that obligation off on the individual homeowners and in a very onerous way. I say onerous because this tax assessment is the same sort of lending program as the PACE program, which this board unanimously opposed at our last meeting, which loans the homeowner, and, and this does this in the same way. It loans the homeowner money that they then pay back on their taxes for 20 years with exorbitant fees attached. So I won't be supporting this item, and I'm hoping that someday soon we can eliminate the program, just like we eliminated the PACE program for similar reasons. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. Well-stated, Commissioner Smith. As well, I'd like to say that this is not a program that is used, the county and no other place acts as a bank for developers to pay what they would normally pay for, right upfront, for wastewater and water at their homes. In the city of Tampa, it doesn't operate this way. It doesn't operate in the city of Temple Terrace or Plant City. They would not do this. I don't, I don't believe they would do this to the homeowners that buy in those jurisdictions as well. There's no other county in the state that does such a program. And it's a real, it hurts the consumers who, the residents who buy those homes and puts a tax that they think is a tax that we're charging them. No, it really, it is really not clear then what the cost of the house is. I've heard from real estate agents during sales that this is a difficulty, and then it requires the county, if any of these people are in distress over this COVID-19, we're going to have to proceed with our attorneys on that lien. And so that is, I think, a real disservice to everyone involved, and we don't get the money upfront for our wastewater and water systems, which are desperately in need of, of that. So I'm with you. I'm not, I'm voting no on this, and we'll continue to do so.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you, Chair. I'll keep this brief. I'm glad this is the last one of these I'm going to vote on. I'll stop there.
Wow, you were brief, weren't you? Okay. What's your pleasure?
I'm going to move approval, Commissioner.
Motion by Commissioner Merman. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, was it Hagan?
Yes.
I think that was Commissioner Hagan, okay. Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Hagan. Seeing no further discussions, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
No.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman? Commissioner Overman?
All right, no, no.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to three. Commissioner Kemp, Overman, and Smith voted no.
Ms. Wise?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Then the next item is your item, item F2, and I believe Ms. Stevens is on the line to present the report on the U.S. Census. Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you have some words?
Thank you, Ms. Wise. Members and ladies and gentlemen, the, the listening, we all know that the census, this is a census year, and from day one, when we started taking the census, we had been talking about how important it is for everyone to complete the census form or online or any means necessary to do this. Unfortunately, in the, right in the middle of the midst of really getting the census information together, the pandemic hit. So the, the country had to take a different approach to taking the census. And then on top of that, I believe that the president cut off one month of the census, made it a month, cutting it off a month early, which really, really puts us behind the eight ball. So I got a call from our representative from the Census, Fon Bosson, to ask Ms. Marilyn Stevens, who is the Assistant Regional Census Manager for the Leonard Region, to come before us to make a presentation. And then I got a call last night from my longtime friend, Bernadine White King, who gave Ms. Stevens a glowing review, says she walks on water. So Ms. Stevens, we're glad to have you here, and we look forward to your presentation. You recognize?
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for inviting me. I'm very excited to be here. I remember my very first meeting with Hillsborough County in 2017, and you all have hit the ground running. I am pleased to say that your 63.4% self-response rate is pretty doggone good. The national rate is 65%. You're just slightly behind it, and I think that you have the 19th highest self-response rate of any county in the state. So here we are, a pandemic, very unusual back-to-school year, and the census. And all of those are important. On August the 11th, we started in the field to contact households that had not completed the census either online, by phone, or by mail. At the same time, we contacted households who had completed the census online, by phone, or by mail as part of a quality check. So we have been getting beat up on both sides. I've completed, why are they here? I haven't completed, why are they here? So I just want everyone to know, the reason when we come to the door, there is a good and definite purpose for us being there. I want to give a shout out to the Hillsborough County Complete Count Committee for all of your great efforts, and that's why this self-response rate is high as it is, which means that we only have to follow up with 36% of your households, and I want you to know that that's good. In some places, we've got to follow up with 60% of the households in a county. So this is good. And the Education Subcommittee of your Complete Count Committee, they really have gone all in in understanding the importance of every parent completing the census for their household. So their work with the superintendent and with the schools, I think, can really show that those efforts really worked well, and I hope that they will continue to do so because we are still out here in the field. We still need parents to self-respond. Even though we will be completing our field operation the end of September, we want everyone in Hillsborough County to know that you can still self-respond. When we come to the door, that enumerator will, must have on a mask. It is mandatory. They must stand six feet away from the door, practicing social distancing. They must have their photo ID on their person. They will have a very distinct census bag that is black with a strange white panel on it with United States Census Bureau embossed in blue. The device that they will use to conduct the interview will have the Census Bureau's logo and the Department of Commerce, and then they are to conduct that interview outside. If no one answers the door, we will leave a notice of visit card, which will say we are there for the purpose of conducting an interview for the 2020 census that is required by law. However, if the household returns that interview to us through an online response or a telephone response at 844-330-2020, or in Spanish, 468444682020, we will not come back to the household. So whether you're in part of the quality check or the initial interview for non-response, if you go online or by phone, the call centers are open every day from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. to ensure that we're in everybody's sleep pattern. Now, the number one question we've been getting in Hillsborough County, every place, is about the security of the information they provide to us. Census data is protected by law. Yesterday, I met with a team of lawyers that want to get involved to ensure the public about the strength of the law in protecting their data, that no one has to be concerned. And so I'm happy about that, and once we get those public service announcements, we will pass them on to Hillsborough County. But I, but I'm here today to say, self-respond or cooperate with the enumerators. And the reason is, is I listened to the, your meeting this morning, I dialed in early about 40 minutes ago, and I'm listening to the, the type of funding with the CARES Act, and I'm sitting here applauding because I know that in that funding formula are population statistics. And Hillsborough County wants to know, wants to make sure that it gets the best count so that its numbers will, will support its needs over the next 10 years. We have a pandemic, we have an unusual school situation, we've got emergency preparedness and emergency management in a state like Florida, healthcare concerns, veteran services, senior services, social services, unemployment benefits, the list goes on. And in order to make sure that Hillsborough knows what Hillsborough needs, every household must complete the 2020 census. And thank you, Commissioners, for being champions, and we are with you every step of the way.
Ms. Stevens, thank you very much for your presentation. We really, really appreciate you being here. We might be at 3, 63%, but our efforts, so we want to get as close to 100% as we possibly can. Let me, let me ask you a question. Is there, at this late date, when the person arrives at the door and you enumerated all of the things that they have to do at the door, and if someone's not home, they leave that card, will the citizens still be able to, if they don't have access to a computer, to still call in? I think that's essential.
Yes, they will. See, we must, we must account for 100% of the households. So you guys have done a tremendous job in getting 63.6% of the households to, to respond. Now we've got to follow up with that, the other 36%, but they can still respond online or by phone. And the card, and the card that we leave, one side's in English and one side is in Spanish.
Right. So ladies and gentlemen of Hillsborough County, please, 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 complete the census form in any, any way you possibly can. form in any, any way you possibly can. They've given numbers of any questions you may have. That person comes to your door, please don't shut the door in their face, they're there to do a job, because the more people that fill out that census, the more money comes to Hillsborough County for all aspects of everything we can do, and we need that money so desperately in Hillsborough County. So please, please do that.
And I want to say that, that Bernadine White King coordinated all of our staff's efforts in Hillsborough County. She, I mean, she's one of the best in the nation, so you guys can be very, very proud of one of your residents. She was a leading partnership coordinator in the nation for managing that team.
Well, Bernadine White King and I go back to growing up in the same neighborhood. She, she's always on my case. She calls me all the time. We talked last night, so thank you. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate it. I think, I think the message we've heard today is how important it is for everyone to be counted. And I think more of us realize now how critically important the "to be counted" is. The dollars that we have available to really assist people and make sure people are fed right now in this county, make sure people have their rent right now because they are unable to work. All of those numbers that we've, we've been reporting on the resources that we've been able to put out to the county to help people in this county during COVID are a result of the numbers that we saw several years ago in the last census. Those, those, that information is, is based on whether or not you're counted. So I, I'm really glad you brought this up today. I'm really happy to hear that people are responding. But answer your door, look for the mask, look for the IDs, and make sure you're counted because it is critically important that the resources that we're able to garner for everyone that's here, no matter who they are, that, that those, those resources are made available so that we can help our citizens move forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Stevens, thank you so very much for your presentation. We appreciate you being here, and we hope that we're able to, to heighten that number here in Hillsborough County. So again, thank you so very, very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you for being 2020 Census Champions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mrs. Wise.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And as you all have mentioned, our CARES funding is directly related to the, our population numbers that we had for the census, so this is helpful. Tom Fessler is going to present the next three items, items before five and six. As a reminder, as you know, we've received the CARES dollars, $256.8 million. And although our, all of our programs that we do under this program for our, our three program for businesses, for individuals, venues, nonprofits, and other programs are all countywide programs, and we are not required by law to share any of these money with the cities. We feel it is appropriate. The cities are our partners, our municipal partners, and they have had many expenses throughout this pandemic as well. And so Tom Fessler is going to present these three items to share some of our CARES dollars with our three municipal partners.
Mr. Fessler, you recognize?
Morning, Commissioners. Tom Fessler, interim Chief Financial Administrator. Item B4 is asking you to approve a CARES Act agreement with the City of Temple Terrace. It is in the amount of $228,817. And as Ms. Wise has indicated, it is for a list of needs that they have that we believe are eligible for CARES Act funding. They did provide us with some information on what they would use the dollars for, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fessler. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Sorry, Chair. I forgot to take my hand down. My apologies.
What's your pleasure?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Kemp.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White to approve item B4. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes, Merman.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
B5.
And, Mr. Chairman, sorry, I just wanted to mention that Temple Terrace will likely have a, a subsequent request that will come before you at a later point in time. The other municipalities may too, but Temple Terrace specifically. Sorry, Tom. Item B5.
Yes, Commissioners. Actually, Temple Terrace did submit an additional request to us. It was just past the agenda deadline for this meeting, so we do intend to come back to you either at, at one of the upcoming meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Item B5 is a CARES Act agreement with the City of Plant City. This agreement is in the amount of $4 million.
Move the item.
Motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Merman to approve item B5. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Ms. Wise.
And the final item is B6 with the City of Tampa, this agreement.
Yes, and Commissioners, the agreement with the City of Tampa is for $20 million.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner, second by Commissioner Kemp to approve item B5. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Ms. Wise.
And the final item is B6 with the City of Tampa, this agreement.
Yes, and Commissioners, the agreement with the City of Tampa is for $20 million.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner, second by Commissioner Kemp to approve item B5. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Ms. Wise.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is your various board appointments, and I believe Lori Ann Finley is going to approve those items with you.
Good morning, Commissioners. You have five boards that are up for appointment today.
Oh, geez.
The first board, or I'll wait, I'll wait for everybody to get ready. Your first board is Code Enforcement Board. Please choose one. Commissioner Miller?
Number four.
Commissioner Overman?
Number six.
Commissioner White?
Four.
Commissioner Merman?
Four.
Commissioner Hagan?
Four.
Commissioner Smith?
Four.
Commissioner Kemp?
Oh, sorry, four.
Toby Jean Duravio.
Commissioners, may I say something before we get to the next board?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Our next board is the Planning Commission. And many people who apply for the Planning Commission have never been engaged with our county's planning processes and land use issues in any way. I think it's very important to appoint people who have some understanding of what the Planning Commission does. It's a very important board. And I just want to call your attention to Vivian Handy, number 13 on our list, who has been engaged in our county's planning process for decades. Ms. Handy had, was a leader in the year-long process of writing the Wyomama Community Plan. She currently serves on the Citizen Advisory Committee to the MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, and understands transportation and traffic issues. She is an environmental expert professionally, and expert in wetlands and habitat issues. Ms. Handy is a longtime resident and small business owner in Wyomama, and it's relevant to note that South County currently has no representation on the Planning Commission. And with all the growth coming to South County, it's really important that South County has some experienced, knowledgeable representation in the process. So I'm asking, please consider supporting Vivian Handy for this position. Thank you.
There is someone that has their mic open, there's a lot of noise. Everyone, if you're not speaking, put your mics on mute, please. If you're not speaking, put your mics on mute. Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you. Well, I, I can appreciate Commissioner Smith's advocacy. As the commissioner that represents portions of both eastern and southern Hillsborough County, I just want to say that I intend to, to cast my vote for number eight, John Paul Brissette. He's an East Hillsborough County resident and comes highly recommended from some leaders in East County as well. So I just wanted to, to advocate for John Paul and just let you know that that's where I'll be casting my vote.
Please call the roll. Hello?
Are you ready for appointments?
Pardon me?
Are you ready for the appointment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Excuse me, excuse, hold on, hold on. Someone has their mic open and there's a lot of noise. If you're not speaking, please, please mute yourself. Go ahead, please.
For Planning Commission, please choose one. Commissioner Miller?
Number seven.
Commissioner Overman?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Commissioner White?
Eight.
Commissioner Merman?
Seven.
Commissioner Hagan?
Eight.
Commissioner Smith?
Thirteen.
Commissioner Kemp?
Thirteen.
We need four votes to appoint someone. We have two for Bryce Bowden, two for John Paul Brissette, and three for Vivian Handy. Does anybody want to change their vote?
I don't see anyone changing their vote. So I think this one you're going to have to bring back.
All right, we'll bring, we'll bring, I think that, for the three, Bryce Bowden, John Paul Brissette, and Vivian Handy. Does anybody want to change their vote?
I don't see anyone changing their vote. So I think this one you're going to have to bring back.
All right, we'll bring, we'll bring, I think that, for the three, Bryce Bowden, John Paul Brissette, and Vivian Handy.
Very good.
The next board is your Historic Resource Review Board. Jamie Lynn Kramer will automatically be appointed. She was just on here because she had also applied to Planning Commission. So since she's not in consideration, she can be appointed to Historic Resources Review Board. Your next board is your Housing Finance Authority. Please choose one. Commissioner Miller?
Come on up. Commissioner White, you have something you want to say?
No, sir. I forgot to lower my hand from my last comment, and I'll take that down right now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, please call the roll for the appointment.
Commissioner Miller?
Number 18.
Commissioner Overman?
Eighteen.
Commissioner White?
Eighteen.
Commissioner Merman?
Eighteen.
Commissioner Hagan?
Twenty-four.
Commissioner Smith?
Eighteen.
Commissioner Kemp?
Eighteen.
There will be Tammy Haylock Moore. And the last board is the Industrial Development Authority. Please choose one. Commissioner Miller?
Thirty-one.
Commissioner Overman?
Thirty-one.
Commissioner White?
My agenda packet says to choose two.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're correct. Choose two. Let's start over. Commissioner Miller, choose two.
Well, I have thirty-one and, thirty-one and twenty-six.
Commissioner Overman?
Thirty-one and twenty.
Commissioner White?
Twenty-five and twenty-eight.
Commissioner Merman?
Twenty-five and twenty-eight.
Commissioner Hagan?
Twenty-seven and twenty-nine.
Commissioner Smith?
Twenty-five and twenty-eight.
Commissioner Kemp?
Twenty. Twenty and thirty-one.
They need four votes, so we're going to take a re-vote on Patrick Ahern, James for Patrick, and James Rodriguez. But please choose two. That would be number twenty-five, twenty-eight, and thirty- Jamie Lynn Kramer will automatically be appointed. She was just on here because she had also applied to Planning Commission. So since she's not in consideration, she can be appointed to Historic Resources Review Board. Your next board is your Housing Finance Authority. Please choose one. Commissioner Miller.
Come on over. Commissioner White, you have something you want to say?
No, sir. I forgot to lower my hand from my last comment, and I'll take that down right now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, please call the roll for the appointment.
Commissioner Miller.
Number eighteen.
Commissioner Overman.
Eighteen.
Commissioner White.
Eighteen.
Commissioner Merman.
Eighteen.
Commissioner Hagan.
Twenty-four.
Commissioner Smith.
Eighteen.
Commissioner Kemp.
Eighteen.
There will be Tammy Haylock Moore. And the Bass Board is the Industrial Development Authority. Please choose one. Commissioner Miller.
Thirty-one.
Commissioner Overman.
Thirty-one.
Commissioner White.
My agenda packet says to choose two.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're correct. Choose two. Let's start over. Commissioner Miller, choose two.
Well, I have thirty-one and thirty-one and twenty-six.
Commissioner Overman.
Thirty-one and twenty.
Commissioner White.
Twenty-five and twenty-eight.
Commissioner Merman.
Twenty-five and twenty-eight.
Commissioner Hagan.
Twenty-seven and twenty-nine.
Oh, dear. Commissioner Smith.
Twenty-five and twenty-eight.
Commissioner Kemp.
Twenty and thirty-one.
Okay, we have a tie between three people. They need four votes, so we're going to take a re-vote on Patrick Ahern, James for Patrick, and James Rodriguez. But please choose two. That would be number twenty-five, twenty-eight, and thirty-one. Please choose two. Commissioner Miller.
Thirty-one and twenty-five.
Commissioner Overman.
Thirty-one and twenty-five.
Commissioner White.
Thirty-one and twenty-five.
Commissioner Merman.
Thirty-one and twenty-five.
Commissioner Hagan.
Twenty-eight and thirty-one.
Commissioner Smith.
Twenty-five and thirty-one.
Commissioner Kemp.
Twenty-five and thirty-one.
There will be Patrick Ahern and James Rodriguez.
Move to bring the Planning Commission back and confirm all the others.
Good second.
Second.
As a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner coming to bringing back the Planning Commission and confirm all the others. See you for discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Mr. Wise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is Commissioner White's item is for the selection of the 2020 Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. ELAP Subcommittee has recommended a recipient for this year, and that's in your backup material. They've recommended Governor Bob Martinez. They're also asking that should he be chosen today as the recipient, that we have the award presentation at the September sixteenth meeting for a nine a.m. time certain. So my motion is to approve Governor Bob Martinez as the recipient of the 2020 Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award and to present the award to him at the September sixteenth board meeting for a nine a.m. time certain.
Second.
Second.
There was a motion by Commissioner White, second by, I think that was Commissioner Overman.
Yes.
Correct.
Thank you.
And Merman.
Merman. Anyone else?
We both, same time.
Okay. Any discussions, see no discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Mr. Wise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is the Stanford Report relating to the COVID-19 program and activities. This will be a combination effort of Tom Fessler, Ron Barton, and Dr. J.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning, Commissioners. Tom Fessler, interim Chief Financial Administrator. I was going to share my screen and go through the staff report.
Okay.
Can you see that?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay. Can you see it now, Commissioners?
Not yet.
Mr. Brewer, are you able to pull up that presentation?
Yes, I certainly can. I will do it right now.
Sorry, Commissioners, working with a new computer.
Can't live without them.
I certainly agree.
Next slide, please, James. Commissioners, this is just a repeat of what you see in your typical staff report, which is the project plan. So I'll move to the next slide. Commissioners, what I wanted to do, this is a summary of the Economic Recovery Program, the Small Business Program. As I indicated to you at the last meeting, we basically had a evaluated the program results where we were. We shut, have shut down, we shut down the program for about a week and a half. We opened it back up on Monday. We shut it down and consolidated three programs into one. We looked at better ways to get the funding out into the community. So there are just a few things I wanted to point out here. I'm going to give you some updated figures from what you're actually seeing on this slide. These are updated figures through the end of the day yesterday. So as far as applications go, we're actually now up to four thousand two hundred and seventy-seven applications. That's up from just under thirty-four hundred. The paid amounts to this point are about six million dollars. We also have, when we reopen, since we reopened yesterday, we had four hundred and new, four hundred and nine new applications submitted since yesterday. If every one of those applications was approved, it would result in an additional seven million dollars getting out to the business community. So the total requested funds at this point are not thirty-three million, but are approximately forty million. The most important thing to point out here is, under the new structure, we did increase the award amounts. So with the applications that we have already approved and paid on, we are going back and we are giving them the supplemental awards in accordance with the new program guidelines. So applicants that previously received payments are now receiving supplemental payment. So the most important thing I wanted to point out on this slide is the average payment amount has now gone from about eighty-five hundred dollars for each business. It is now up to about seventeen thousand five hundred dollars is the average amount that's being requested by participants. Next slide, please. Again, this is information that we've had in each of the staff reports. I looked at this in relation to the last staff report we presented, and these percentages are approximately the same. And you can see the number of applications per district. Next slide. This is the workforce training program. We have now gotten, it appears, past some initial implementation processes. So these numbers are starting to increase significantly. As an example, the job seeker training application is the thirteen forty-nine. That's up from nine sixty-six two weeks ago. As far as employer applications at one eighteen, that's up from seventy from the last report. And as far as anticipated hires based on job orders, that's up to seven fifteen from five hundred and twelve on the last report. Next slide. Next slide. This is, that's just the project plan. Next slide, please. Yes. So as far as the housing and utility assistance program, I just wanted to point out that we now have about fifty-eight hundred and thirty-four applications received as of yesterday. That's up from just over four thousand applications on the last report two weeks ago. So we are, we are still seeing some very strong demand here. One of the things I wanted to point out is, we had, again, taking a look at the program, we've been experiencing a little bit of some growing pains there as far as getting through applications. We identified that, we put some processes in place, and the applications being processed that is shown as forty-one twenty-nine here is now down to about twenty-five hundred, and we're anticipating trying to move through the rest of those applications within the next week. So that's probably the most important thing I wanted to point out here is that we have looked at and improved some processes to get payments out into the community quicker. Next slide. Again, this is the slide that you've seen in the last staff report, and the percentages here by each of the incorporated areas, the cities are relatively the same as the last report. Next slide, please. Just revisiting the Ennet University Village. We currently have twenty-eight beds occupied as of eight twenty-five. That's down by thirty-two beds from eight ten. I guess the most important thing as it relates to this slide is that we can see that things are starting to improve as far as the homeless that are being housed. That is also down significantly in our quarantine and isolation site. We're now down to six, six rooms being occupied. Next slide. This is PPE information, what we're getting at, what we've used, what we're getting out into the community. You can see at the bottom, we have now a change, changes since eight twelve. So you can kind of see what's been occurring. As you're aware, cases are starting to go down. Most important thing I wanted to point out on this slide is the total tests are now at ninety-eight thousand dollars, and that's up from approximately ninety thousand dollars, or I'm sorry, not ninety thousand, ninety-eight thousand tests as opposed to ninety thousand tests on the last report. Next slide, please. And this is, again, just a summary of where we are as far as expenditure of the dollars. You're going to see disbursements start to go up substantially on your future reports. As you're aware, you get to approve agreements with each of the cities in the amount of approximately twenty-four million dollars today. Those payments will be going out to the cities, I anticipate, within the next probably couple of weeks. You can see that as far as agreements that are in place, that's up to seven point five million dollars. That's up from about forty, forty million dollars, or forty million dollars on the last report. Next slide, please. These are the FEMA-related expenditures. This is a different funding source for the expenditures that we're incurring. We're at sixteen point seven million dollars there. We do anticipate that all of that, or the majority of that amount should be reimbursed. Whatever is determined to be allowable here will have a funding source outside of county general funds. Next slide, please. And this is, again, just grants that we've received for COVID-related purposes in addition to the FEMA funding source and in addition to the CARES Act funding source. We are going to be just keeping this updated as we go through future reports for you. Next slide. And so before we get into the Head Start report, we've had Dr. Jenkins here today to go through a quick presentation on your Head Start program and reopening activities. But before that, what we wanted to do is, we are getting very close to the point of launching our nonprofit programs. So we thought we'd have Ron Barton just spend a few minutes going over kind of the status of where we are in each of those programs, and again, just summarizing for you what those programs are. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Ron.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, Tom. As you've seen in both today's presentation, as well as some conversations that we've had with you previously, we are about to launch some nonprofit initiatives that we hope will be very meaningful in the community. John Mueller talked with you a little bit about the facilities, I'll call them the venues nonprofit program, where we can help not just some of the larger venues in our community that are tourism and cultural-based, but frankly, to reach down to venues and activities that protect our youth. And so, you know, entities like Brandon Aquatic Center, or JCC, or any number of other venues that host programming for our youth across the community. We want to protect both the employees and our children and families as they utilize those facilities for programming that's available to the public. And so we're anxious to get that program moving forward, and John covered that, I think, very well this morning. Secondly, we have a nonprofit program that we've talked with you before about our safety net providers. And so we have approximately eighty nonprofit entities that the county or the cities work with on a regular basis. These are, these are partners that are already engaged with our municipal or county governments in furthering our mission related to protecting our citizens on a normal basis in a normal year. And obviously, we need them even more so in the pandemic. So there are approximately eighty nonprofits that we have contractual relationships with, or our cities do. And we want to move forward with the first phase of the nonprofit program that will engage each of those entities, again, in areas that are important related to homelessness, feeding of the community, mental and physical health, anything in the public safety realm. And so we will start that program early next week. We want to follow that with a second phase of a nonprofit program that basically will be a little bit like our Kickstart program for small businesses. In other words, it would be a blanket award to other nonprofits in our community just to have a lifeline out there to provide some financial assistance. And we will be moving forward with that, probably in a couple of weeks, because we want to clear out our engagement with the public safety nonprofits in our Phase One. We're also looking, I don't know if you saw the references that just recently came out about the extension on the Moratorium of Abductions. And with every good news, there's always potentially some bad news. And what we're going to have to begin to look at is whether there is a circumstance of foreclosures related to property owners. We don't know that yet. We want to do some investigation, but certainly some things that we want to look forward in the next couple, three weeks are programs that might complement Audrey's program, but allow landlords to actually make application under that program on behalf of multiple tenants. We see that as a benefit because we can make a bigger difference in helping both the tenants, but also forestall some financial hardship for property owners and not making payments on their lending side. So we're going to explore that as well. Lastly, we've mentioned this to you before, but we will launch, I think, Monday or Tuesday of next week, our childcare program. And so that will be, you know, that'll be out on the streets. We estimate a little over three hundred childcare providers that are licensed and in good standing with the county that we should be able to help with a financial assistance program. Cheryl Howell is taking the lead on that, and we're excited to get that going Monday or Tuesday of next week as well. That's a brief overview. Certainly be happy to answer any questions. Tom, I'll turn it back to you.
Yes. At this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Jenkins to run through my head start presentation as it relates to what we're doing related to the virus.
Thank you, Tom. Good morning, Commissioners. Are you able to hear me?
Need to speak a little louder.
Are you able to hear me now?
There we go. Yes.
All right. Thank you for allowing me to present Head Start on COVID-19. For the Board of County Commission programs, we begin Monday, August thirty-first. E-learning only. All of our staff continue to work remotely. Next slide, please. I thought it was important for us to demonstrate the differences between the Board's program and the Hillsborough County Public Schools program. Even though all of it is under the Board's auspice, for BLCC, we're e-learning only. We are working with our nineteen locations, our delegates, about sixteen, sixty-two children and families in comparison to the Boards, to the School Boards program, which is hybrid, e-learning, brick and mortar. They began the twenty-fourth and the thirty-first. We have ninety-nine Head Start classrooms over there for eighteen twelve. This gives us a total of three thousand four hundred seventy-four children and families that the Board is ultimately responsible for with Hillsborough County. Next slide. This is a roadmap just to show how we are doing, and we're doing well. We visited the BLCC sites, so we've completed that and referenced the classrooms. Also procurement of all of our PPE equipment. Of course, this is the Phase One project. A lot of it is still a work in progress, working with, you know, delegates and discussions. Towards Phase Two, we will continue to review the trends, seek approval and understanding from our healthcare professionals and Board leadership. And from there, we will project a re-entry date for face-to-face operations. Next slide. Commissioners, this is the enrollment status as of eight twenty-one. For the most part, we're in good standing. The Office of Head Start has given us flexibility in most areas, and that includes enrollment. As you can see, it is basically the Hillsborough County Public Schools program where we have the largest vacancy with Head Start. For us, early Head Start is at fifty-two, so for the total program, a little over a thousand children. This was as of August twenty-first. Again, Office of Head Start has given us flexibility and do not foresee issues or problems with us meeting full enrollment. Next slide. This slide gives us just an update. This slide gives us just an update of where we are in reference to the educational piece. We're seeking greater clarification from the State of Florida Office of Early Learning, the VPK program, whether we can offer e-learning bases, brick and versus brick and mortar, or a combination of both. But with that, our teachers are still continuing to work remotely. We perform virtual home visits, and we're using ClassDojo, Myon Reader, the Myon Reader, and Edeka for our social emotional tool, working well with education. Next slide. This gives you the stats in reference to the engagement portion. We took two different surveys. So about sixty percent of our families are being affected by the closures, and this is mainly, well, we show the greatest need within the McLeod Head Start locations, zip codes three-three-six-zero-four through three-three-six-ten. Fifty percent of our parents are comfortable coming back, and fifty percent are not. Next slide. Next slide. Thank you. This is towards our health operation. We've still been able to provide diapers, wipes, and formulas, formula to our parents. It is either delivered via a vendor or direct delivery from our staff. We are pushing to our parents to understand that even though we're in an e-learning platform, the required immunizations still will be a part of it so that when we go back to the face-to-face operations, everyone will be up and operational. And the last two stats are just the families that we assisted in the month of June and those in the month of July. Next slide. This gives you a fiscal update from the CARES funding. We received a little over three million dollars. This gives you the breakdown of where that funding will be dispersed. Next slide. This is just the expenditures and the purposes of the expenditures. And again, PPE, laptops and tablets. For the e-learning operations, we found that parents need technology, and they also need the internet. And so the funding was approved on consent today, which is wonderful. We can move forward now and support our families in purchasing laptops and also supporting them with internet services towards e-learning continuance. Next slide. I just wanted to also offer in reference to how we have been performing in an e-learning option. Our families actually have done better with the e-learning in comparison to face-to-face stats. They've been able to maintain in reference to our reading. We can see that for the most part, there's been maybe about fourteen hours per week. Families are maintaining and concentrating on e-learning, and this was all offered through the Waterford Partnership. Waterford offered FreeDell computers and internet services to families within Hillsborough County. We had nine hundred and fifty-five families to participate, which is absolutely wonderful. Next slide. This gives a breakdown of the, just the areas that we worked with in reference to the e-learning platform in Waterford. You see phonics, you see the comprehension and the language concepts. And so, again, I just want to emphasize that even though it is trying times, our families are still producing, our staffs are engaged, and we're just looking forward to Phase Two. Final slide, Commissioners, is I can answer any questions for you?
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Fessler, anything else?
No Commissioners who are available for questions.
Okay. Commissioner Oviedo, you recognize?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you all for your reports. I mean, this is very, very helpful to see how hard everyone is working to reach out to our communities to make sure our citizens have what they need. First off, I want to reach out to and thank Mr. Barton for the work with our nonprofits, and especially those on our safety net areas. The critical need of many of individuals, as we heard from Dr. Jenkins' report, is having access to internet and technology to be able to function is critically important to our process, but it's also critically important to our citizens that are attempting to utilize the benefits that we've made available, these programs that we're rolling out. So working with our existing safety net providers that we have had a contract with, and those that we need to have a contract with to help facilitate citizens' access to our benefits is critically important, so which I'm really glad to see that those are rolling out in the next week or so, and look forward to seeing both the first and second phase of those safety net programs working. We talked about how important childcare in our early EPG meetings, and how important it was to our economy. So I do want to thank Head Start and the efforts that they've put forth to really reach out to parents, to assist them, and having access to internet, the digital divide is a huge barrier to success. And realizing that that is an issue, and how to facilitate fixing it, I think it would be really helpful for us to look at that broad scale, not only in our Head Start programs, but in a lot of our communities. So thank you for doing the what you're doing, and seeing that there's been improvement in learning, and in our learning, early learning platform also helps to make the case that e-learning is doable, even with VPK. And I see that daily now with the kindergarteners. So I appreciate all the work all of you are doing, and want to thank the staff for really making, you know, moving a mountain and a molehill as hard as you've been able to over the last several months. And so, thank you. Let's keep getting it done. Thank you.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll keep this brief. I just want to commend Dr. Jay. The Head Start program has come a long way. Those of us that have been here, Commissioner Miller, Commissioner Hagan, remember back during the recession how, you know, we had some issues, and she just came in there and she got everything going so well for our little kiddos out there that really need to be in a place when the parents, and that's what Head Start does, they give, really help families that have low incomes to get their kids in some kind of early education. And I also want to thank Ron Barton, and want to ask him just a quick question. Ron, and maybe it's something for you to go back to your group and consider, but will 501(c)(6) be considered as part of the nonprofit, or if you could just help me?
Yes, ma'am. It's Ron Barton. We actually had that conversation yesterday about being very clear of the legal status related to the various nonprofits, and obviously, we're going to lean towards the most liberal view as possible, but we actually had that conversation about being very specific about the various filing statuses for the nonprofits. And while I do have the mic, let me make sure, I'm just up here giving you a briefing. This is Carl Harness, Audrey Ziegler, Cheryl Howell, Tom Fessler. I'm leaving out people, but, you know, it's a team effort. So I just happen to be giving you a briefing, so those pat on the backs go to a lot of other people besides me.
Well, to the team, congratulations. You've done very well, and we're getting the money out, which is important. So we're really helping a lot of people, but I will tell you, over the weekend, I was in three different businesses that knew nothing about our three programs. They were in the city, but I don't know how we can reach these people. I do think I kind of lit a fire, somebody, one lady, you'll probably see a lot of applications come in, she was emailing everybody, but I just, I kind of do worry about our outreach because I do think a lot of the small businesses that are not connected, you know, per se to any kind of government agency, that they might be missing out. So anything we can do to help facilitate communications out to everybody in the community, maybe USF can help us with that. I don't know how we would do that, but, you know, I'll leave that up to the experts in the communications team. So thank you all, though, very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Wise?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commissioner Merman, for mentioning that. And we had some correspondence go out to each of our employees this week about the R3 program, because I think we were each finding that as well, that despite the massive efforts that we were going through to try to get the word out, you know, people were just busy with their own lives, and they weren't aware that this program existed. So we've asked each of our employees to be ambassadors for this program, to bring the flyer, to ask their gym, their coffee shop, their deli, whatever it is that this money is available, and then, you know, help spread the word for these small businesses. So thank you for mentioning that.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I'll just also say, I know it's been a heavy lift for our staff, and I'm really proud of everything that has been done to reach out to the community, and we know that the county is suffering terribly, our small businesses, our large businesses, our homeowners, and people just trying to get a meal. And I was very interested as well in the Head Start program and a few things about it, Dr. Jenkins. I was, it was interesting to see that you said that reading, or the home instructor was doing in some ways better.
Isn't that fantastic, Commissioner?
Yeah. I was fascinated by that. Any speculation, just why?
Yes. Part of the philosophy with Office of Head Start is that parents are their first teachers.
Chairman Miller, I am not able to hear her on the audio.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you a little bit better.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, part of the Head Start philosophy is that parents are their first teachers, and so we were able to introduce to parents how to educate their children, how to participate in a better format for them. Yes, they're little people, yes, they have lots of energy, but this is how you're able to, you know, get them to sit down and read and participate. And we're just so fantastically happy that our parents were able to come through and improve upon what we'd even done face-to-face with them. So thank you, thank you so much.
That is interesting, because that's, you know, that's some modeling we always hear about, and so that's great that you've been able, during these times, to foster that. I think it's a real achievement, and really interesting. And my other was, it was a little fascinating that there was a fifty-fifty of parents who felt comfortable within bringing children in, and parents who did not, an exact fifty-fifty split among the Head Start parents. And so, and I'm sorry if I miss this as I was going through it, but I guess we're looking at now when we might be able to provide some in-person assistance?
Yes, that would be in Phase Two, and again, we would take into consideration conversations with Bonnie, Carl, and, you know, following what our healthcare professionals are acknowledging to us. But it was, it's quite interesting. So we have half who want to go back and half who are not even interested in doing it. And again, that survey was taken in July. We plan to take another one at the end of September to see, you know, just what the mindset is from there. But, yeah, quite interesting, fifty-fifty.
I will say this, I've been extraordinarily worried about the opening of the schools and the possibility of community spreads, particularly when our positivity rate is so high. But one of the areas that it indicates by everything I've seen and read is that, you know, children under ten, the younger children are, that is less of a community spread worry for whatever reasons, not that children are affected. We know that there was that very sad death of a six-year-old in Hillsborough County, so I don't want to act as if that can't happen, or it isn't a deep concern. But, you know, I'm looking at programs like Head Start, if we were to start safely, it would, I would believe, be among younger children. So thank you.
You're welcome, Commissioner. Thank you so much.
Okay, let me thank all the staff that have been involved in all that you're doing. I was wondering at one time if you all were working twenty-four hours a day, because something would come up one day, and the next day, you'd have a program in place to alleviate the problem. So I'm saying, at least, is this staff sleeping at all? So hats off to each and every one of you, all that you do, and I know there's more to come. We don't know when we're going to get out of this pandemic, but thanks for everything that you've done. Thank you very much. Ms. Wise?
The final item, Mr. Chairman, is future discussion items.
So any future discussion items? Commissioner Kemp, you recognize? Any future discussion items? Anyone have any future discussion items? Going once, going twice? Well, it is eleven twenty-five, please take note. We finished our agenda, did a lot of work, and we will come back tomorrow to deal with our COVID issues, and to ask you to be safe the remainder of the day, be careful, and with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.